Yeah, there are...
I'll give a little print back and...
My nose!
Jerry, how are you?
Oh, good.
How's Jerry?
Good. Busy, busy, busy. A lot going on, I tell you.
Like what?
This is my fifth interview. Oh, it's been six of the day.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, yes, you would. Well, I guess I'd better not. I'd better run this, because it won't be the seventh great interview. I don't know what questions you're gonna ask. I may not have an answer.
What do you think you're watching for Christmas?
That's a real bad question.
Hasn't got much going to it yet.
Yeah, how long is he going to be?
I want to put it in the paper.
Oh, no, you don't. It's too hot in here.
All right, well, let's go ahead and... You know, can you lead us to the pledge?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, in the book of liberty and just to the law.
Thank you, Dan.
Well, whatever it is, it better be made in America.
Oh, they do that on...
Do you watch Eyewitness News?
Yeah, Channel 7.
I didn't see it enough. They're doing a big thing of it.
Oh, they did.
I haven't yet. It doesn't matter.
Let me turn this off. I thought... I was thinking of an iPad, too. Were they making that?
Oh, they have to be made in Singapore.
I don't know. I have a bad idea, Doug. They're made in America.
Assembled in China.
Of course, man.
Assembled in China.
China. Oh, boy. Okay.
There's not enough.
The, uh... The first thing we have to see, we have a couple of guests who are gonna give an overview of the Orange County Department of Mental Health, uh, post-disaster counseling services that can associate with Hurricane Irene and Tropical Storm Leeve. This is through a grant that the county is going to be utilizing. So, I'm gonna... We'd like to speak to it. Here's the microphone. You need to talk into that because that'll record everything.
Okay.
What did you bring Chris Ashman with you? So he can sit there and take notes.
Right.
Okay, I'll try to make this as loud as I can. Am I talking out loud?
Okay.
Okay, okay. So, uh, my name is Tariq Green, and, uh, this is my colleague Rosa Gorman, and, uh, we're from Project Hope. Uh, Project Hope is, uh, it's an organization that receives federal grant money, um, to, to provide services to people who were affected by, uh, Hurricane, um, Irene and Tropical Storm Leeve. People who, who lost their homes or lost personal property, um, are eligible to receive financial assistance as well as other assistance, um, counseling services, or whatever kind of referrals that they may need. So what they did, uh, Mental Health Association applied for this grant and, uh, was actually awarded, um, actually awarded the grant. I, I'm not sure about how much money was actually given, but I do know between the counties, uh, Orange County received a substantial, uh, amount of that. And so what they did was they hired counselors to, to go out and, and provide, uh, crisis counseling to people who, who may need. A lot of people whose houses that we went to in the areas that we were told to, to visit, and, and we were told to visit these areas by, um, by instances of reports. So whichever areas had the highest number of reports, we were sent out into those areas to, to, um, make assessment and see who needed what kind of services and, uh, refer them if we couldn't provide, then refer them to the proper agencies who could, who could provide. What we found was that a lot of people had small children who lost their homes, who, who lost substantial amount of, uh, property. If the whole home wasn't, uh, destroyed, um, substantial parts of it was devastated just by floods, uh, they were, uh, the houses were affected by mold, um, and, and some of it was just incredible to see up close and personal. Some of those who had young children had to relocate, and when they relocated, the children would have to relocate to other schools, and, uh, and, and they were affected, you know, and they were affected severely, uh, by that, by that kind of crisis in the home for the first time. Uh, we, we've heard stories of children who, um, or parents who told their children, because the water at the time of the flood was actually pouring into the basement, the parents ran upstairs and told the children, "Come on, we're running out to McDonald's," but it was a rush situation, you know, to get the kids out the house. Um, so they wouldn't panic or be alarmed by that. But then afterwards, not being able to go back home, you know, for, for weeks at a time, you know, they had to break into the children's story. So in those kind of cases, you know, some kind of, uh, crisis counseling is definitely, uh, called for or warranted. So that's what we try to provide in cases like that. Um, in other cases where, uh, people rely on farming for their, for their income, their sole means of, of sustenance is farming, a lot of areas where, where the land was so totally flooded, they couldn't, they had no way to survive or no way to, to maintain after that point, and a lot of people did not know that they were eligible for some kind of assistance reimbursement or, um, you know, a, a way to, to, um, to be assisted. They didn't know. So we go around and we try to provide whatever information that we can to help them get assisted. Um, a lot of people who are eligible for assistance and haven't applied yet, they still have a two-week, a two-week period in which they can apply to FEMA. Um, if they apply by December 15th, then they will receive, uh, some kind of assistance, whatever they're, they're eligible for. Um, someone will come out to their home and do, and do an assessment, make an appraisal, and they'll go through a particular process and procedure, and then they'll, they'll be eligible to receive some kind of services. Um, only if they apply by December 15th, which is the important thing. That's the deadline. So we try to get that information to them, um, you know, before, before it's too late, obviously. So what, one of the things that we're doing on December, on December 8th is we're holding, uh, an, uh, a presentation, it's like the information, um, uh, event in the town of Newburgh, and, um, we're hoping they're there so that, uh, people all, from all over Orange County will be invited, are invited to this particular event. FEMA will be there. People from the, uh, Small Business Administration, as I know, the SBA will be there. Um, and they have what they call the, those, uh, the Crisis Management from FEMA or from the, from the federal government will be there to answer any questions that people in the neighborhoods or in the communities may, may, may need, you know, to know. So it's not, even though it's being held there, the entire Orange County is invited to come to that one, and we're definitely gonna try to, um, do more, you know, before it's said and done with. Um... Right, so we have a case management team as well, and the case management provides a, a more in-depth service than what we might provide as we go door to door to people's homes. The case management has, um, information from the federal government and through FEMA that, uh, we are not provided with as crisis counselors. They have a more in-depth, um, uh, information vault that they can, that they work from, so which is good from them. Um, and so basically, that's what it is that we try to provide. Um, I don't know if there's any questions that you all may have had, um, directly that you might want to know about, and maybe some of you may have been affected by that, by that storm in your homes or know people who were. If you paid out of pocket to have anything, uh, fixed in that, that any damage that was, that was caused by that particular storm or hurricane, then I do believe that there is a way for you to be reimbursed as long as receipts are, are held over and the damage was, was caused by that storm. I think that there's a way that you can be reimbursed, so, you know.
How do we contact you?
You can contact us. We'll give you numbers. We'll leave you, um, information. We'll leave you numbers and, uh, and other information that you can use, website, um, and we'll give you numbers to FEMA where you can call direct.
And the case management number.
More so than should give it to Jerry Corey, the press.
And Jerry.
And Jerry. Don't forget Jerry.
And...
Jones.
We're talking about it right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is all our...
Radio.
Radio.
And video.
Videos, so...
Because it's December 15th is that deadline, and we're really out of time.
And they extended it, too, from the...
They added.
Right. The, the original cutoff date was October 31st, and it was extended to December 15th, so this is the actual cutoff.
How does it get referred to the case management where it's more in-depth? Do you have to look at it first and do the referral, or do they call the case management team? How does that work?
We usually just provide them with the number if, if they're saying they're having problems with FEMA, because they can actually look up all the information. They have access to that. So we'll just provide them with the number, and they can call them, and then they, or they can even come in and, um, talk with the case management.
Okay.
But you also, uh, you can give emotional support to these folks. This is counseling as well.
Yes.
In fact, the reason why they're on the agenda tonight is I got a, uh, a call from Chris Ashman of Orange County Mental Health, and said that they would be here, and, uh, he sent a nice letter saying that the counties can provide this kind of counseling services for citizens who had received damage. I mean, they're talking about had to leave their home or flooded basements or whatever, and particularly going into the holidays where people have been, uh, their homes have been dismantled or whatever and stayed repaired. So this is, this is counseling for beyond the money. It's just mental and emotional support saying, "We understand, and let's see what we can help you out with." So I certainly appreciate you all being here. I certainly appreciate Chris Ashman and the County of Orange, the county executive legislator, for, uh, going out and getting these funds to do this with. Even though the town of Ocean, we were very fortunate that we didn't have widespread devastation, some, like some municipalities in New York State had. We didn't have devastating, uh, situations. And I'd given those addresses, or not addressed, but those, those areas to, uh, the Department of Mental Health so they, you know, here's where the streets were that had the major problems in the town of Ocean. Well, thank you very much, folks, and, uh, I wish you very well, and, um...
Thank you.
If you have any questions of us or, or problems or whatever, then get back. I'm always in my office every day. Definitely. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. Thank you very much. You take care.
Take care.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is we got a request from the Church of St. Joan, the Joan the Evangelist on Murray Avenue. Um, there's an event that, uh, we've been requesting road guards, and, and Ken was going to help us with this tonight, and, uh, May King, you can...
Well, I just kept on being told if I'm not there, but I was talking to Saint John while he discussed your...
Okay.
What our policy is on...
Well, well, basically, the, our policy is we'll have our two road patrols out where this needs to be if they need to, as part of their normal duties. If the road patrol needs to leave, go for some other emergency, they will in fact leave. Um, it really behooves the, uh...
Which one of these?
I don't know.
Okay.
It really behooves any, any organization that's having, uh, an event where you need road guards to try to provide some of their own. My understanding, the town, the village, the county, we're not financially in a position going forward to be doing this on an overtime basis.
Well, I will, uh, talk to our police department and ask them if they would, uh, see if they can coordinate their normal patrols to be in this vicinity so that they could assist, if you understand.
Yeah, my friend, the father, he called Sergeant Houston.
Okay.
Well, I'll...
Yeah, you can talk.
Yeah, I'll talk to Sergeant Houston.
Just one comment. Um, I think the fire police always likes to get a boss, so as a backup, uh, I know Howard Weiss has always said they're available.
Yeah, I have that number.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the next item is, uh... Who, do you want to talk to this one, or you want me to talk to this?
Which one is this?
The energy combination from my top Iowa.
You know, I must have the old agenda. Oh, there it is. I got it.
Yes, I'll talk to him. Very good. Okay.
It's in our package here.
Yeah, I have it.
Um, basically, to just give you a little rundown, uh, back in, uh, the federal, federal government legislation back in, uh, 2005, uh, we're talking about the T-12 fluorescent bulbs no longer being manufactured as of July 2012. So what took place, Orange and Rockland has a program going. They came to our, our highway department, our police department, and our water and sewer department to look at all the fixtures we have there and ones that do qualify. If they do qualify for this new discontinuing of this product, uh, they will cover the cost, seventy percent of the cost of installing new, uh, fixtures, fluorescent fixtures, plus the light bulbs, plus the installation. They will cover seventy percent, and we will pay the other thirty percent. Uh, our part in here, and I got it broken down just so you know, the town part is six hun-, uh, I mean, the highway part is $669.45, water and sewer is $353.52, and the police is $532.95, which is a total of $1,542.93. And if you look at the report, the survey they did when they came out, we will get return on investment in one year. In one year, you will save around $1,500 of energy costs. So as far as my recommendation here, I think we should go forward with this because it sounds like it's a no-brainer. We will get all our new fixtures at thirty percent, installation and so forth, and after the first year, we'll have a substantial savings on, on electrical supply.
Okay, thank you, Lou.
I didn't go over the whole thing because there's other information here, but that's based in what it's all about.
Right. The, um, the, the two numbers are, the cost to us on the equipment is $1,555.92 in the first year, same, $1,542.93. And so it's loose, and it's kind of a brainer. Would someone like to make a motion that we authorize the Department of, uh, the Superintendent of Highways, who's overseeing this, to, uh, proceed on with this particular, uh, installation?
So I'm a...
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, um, I mean, choose a contractor for this.
Huh?
Who, who's...
I think Orange and Rockland's taking care of this.
Yeah. Okay. I don't know why Orange and Rockland actually does electrical work. I think they're just bulbs, huh?
See, this program includes free upgrades of incandescent bulbs that come packed fluorescent bulbs.
Okay, it's just the bulbs, okay.
Yeah.
Usually they do it with bulbs. No, I love the idea. Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
No, it's a good question. Great question.
Uh, all fairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. By the way, we did something similar to this in the town...
Yeah, we did this a lot. I mean, years back.
Uh, in, in Town Hall.
Yeah, I did it in Manhattan. It's still happening. The bulbs are still working.
Well, the other thing is the life of these bulbs is much longer than...
Now, the problem is you can't, you can't replace them, so...
Oh, I have one other comment.
Right.
Uh, in talking about this, uh, with Broadwood, uh, I realized that we sort of have a problem like that over the senior center. I don't know if we can get this done in time, but I think me and Broadwood are gonna go out there tomorrow, Wednesday, check and see what they have, and see if Orange and Rockland wants to participate. That's the senior center, because the senior center has a lot of fixtures, a lot of light bulbs.
They are.
And they're, they're causing problems because the, uh, ballises cannot even be replaced anymore, so I think we have a lot of outdated stuff there. So I don't know if we can get in under the wire, but we're gonna see if we can, if you want me to pursue that.
Sure.
What do you think? What about Town Hall?
We've, we've had ours.
Yeah, we have, huh?
Yes, it was done about two years ago.
Remember, they were used to all like dock on...
Yeah.
Because they don't have the mercury yet. The new bulbs don't have the mercury. That's the need bulbs.
Okay, the next item is, uh, this is a, a, an amended relenie for the unpaid water and sewer charges. We passed this, uh, a couple of meetings ago. This is a tax relenie that, uh, is done by, uh, resolution, and, uh, there was a $4 error in it somewhere. So, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and, I'd like to make a motion regarding this resolution. It is be resolved that the following charges for water and sewer service remaining unpaid as of the date of this resolution be relieved upon the 2012 real property tax rolls. The total levy for the unpaid utilities for 2011 is $269,044.54. The total levy of meter installations, uh, for water meter installations in 2011 is $11,088.39. The total unpaid in meters is $280,132.93. Something like the second is motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
We investigate who made the $4 mistake.
Yes, I already know the answer to that.
Oh, okay.
Can we have a roll of coal over this?
Aye.
Down Southern Line.
Aye.
Down Blue Bowl.
Aye.
Down Blue Palace.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. I would also like to say that that is an industry, I think, that allows the financial health of our community. We have four water districts and two sewer districts, and to have $280,000, $280,132.93 of unpaid water and sewer bills, I think that's a significant thing in today's world, and it's certainly higher than it was last year. Okay, the next one is, uh, we have a request by the developer, David Macken, to reduce the Meadows of Ocean's, uh, performance bond on work completed, and we have a letter here from Sean Hoffman, professional engineer with Rick Associates. And initially, the, the, uh, outstanding performance bond was $961,200. The request was reduced down to $328,818. Well, after this was inspected on the 21st of November with the Highway Superintendent and, uh, Mr. Hoffman, they drew the conclusion that it can, yes, be reduced, but it can only be reduced down to $558,400, and that would be to ensure that the remaining work be completed. So with that, would someone like to make a motion then that we reduce this performance bond accordingly?
A move. Second.
Any discussion? All fairs say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. This next item is, uh, George had been working on the longest time, like a couple of years, uh, the, uh, renewal of the cable, Time Warner Cable Vision franchise renewal contract. When did you start that, George?
Uh, I guess it must be, it must have been about two years.
Almost two years ago. And, and so we'd, uh, gone through all the motions and things. Finally, the, this week, uh, the Public Service Commission has approved the Time Warner Cable LLC franchise renewal request. And, uh, now, do we need a motion on that, George? We've already done that, have we done it?
Yeah, we, we approved, we had to approve it. We wanted to send it on, and then it was, uh, viewed by Time Warner.
Right.
And Time Warner sent it up there. I think it says something more than on that quotes in there somewhere that we approved the franchise at a, at a, at a held upon hearing.
Yep, we did all that.
Which sounds authorized renewal of the franchise by resolution, April 28th, 2011.
Says in the, the language base, this proceeding is closed.
So, um...
Could you use your mic?
Oh, sure. I mean, I would defer to council if you asked, uh, Dennis, if we need something Thursday to do that, but I think, I don't think we need something. I don't think so. We approved it.
Yeah.
This is just to notice that, that the commission has now approved what we approved.
I think it's also...
It's a non-deal.
Well, and it's also interesting that the, uh, the, uh, someone here, I read the date of the, of this is with the approval.
Well, it actually, the commission approved it on November 17th.
That, yeah, okay. Issued and effective is November 3rd, 2011. Good. All right, thank you.
So therefore, then the revenue stream, which is an increase there, should, uh, hopefully start, maybe it started already, I don't know, but, uh, it's certainly January 1st.
Yep. No, it's gonna be, I think, in November 30th, 2011.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Looking for the jacket in there.
Well, yeah, and then there's one other thing, which is not really related to this, but there's an issue that I think is still on. They, they still were collecting money, um, right through this quarter and on, for that, uh, fund to, uh, installation, installation of places that didn't have the quota of twenty per X amount of feet. And I still think, even though we did get a check of $160,000, I still think we're entitled to some, some more money there.
We agreed to...
We agreed to look at it.
To look at that.
Right.
Once a year.
Right, and also put them on notice that we felt that we would accept this, but, and they're also entitled to share whatever additional that's...
I think in early 2012 was probably when that year was up, and we've been at this a long time.
Yeah.
Good point, Jerry.
Yeah.
And, and George, thank you very much for all the work you've done on that.
Thank you, love.
Good job, George.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is, would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of work sessions of October 24th and November 10th, 2011, in the regular meetings of October 27th and November 21st, 2011?
A move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any additions or corrections to that?
I gave my additions and corrections. They were later, uh, to, um, pursuant before the meeting, and there was one meeting that I was absent. I think, do you have those as well, that date?
No.
Oh, you didn't have them. Well, whatever date that was that I was out.
Did you bring, did you bring those, uh, with you?
Oh, yeah.
Why don't we hold these over for Thursday?
We'll do it Thursday.
Okay.
Uh, can we, I, I withdraw my motion.
Yeah, I'll just move my second.
Okay, thank you.
Good to know that at least some of us here are.
No. That's, that's right. I think so, yes.
Sorry, Scott. The meeting's a quick, though. You more on vacation than we do. Talk in ten minutes.
And you too, George.
I get my shots in when I can.
It's the West Side.
The West Side. You know this guy.
Hey, it's just another board where...
Does anybody else have anything that we'd like for the, uh, agenda tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to set the stage for, I guess, Thursday, as we talked about, um, earlier today. Um, I, this evening, I go up the phone with, uh, Gray Hotel and our insurance carrier, and so it's an event that takes place, and we, it's a plan with resolution, so that we pass this on to the dad. Um, so the damages for next year, as far as, um, insurance, of our muscle rate is $70,362.50. Last year, for your application review, we paid $66,451. Increase, if this is actually going to be...
if this is actually going to be this is a check. I think it's pretty much. I mean, it's not gonna vary much. Would be $3,911.50. Uh he went out to three different carriers. Trident wasn't competitive last year and their rates increased, so they weren't going to be competitive at all. Selective, our past insurance carrier, not last year, year before, um actually declined to bid because of our losses. I can totally understand that, but you know, that was one of the things that we had with uh that loss with Zurich and probably the underground tanks. Um then uh the the one that did bid on it is the same one that we have this year. We just use the casualty. It's an A-plus ring firm. So it's basically the same thing. Now, what caused this slight increase? Two things. The values of the property, when they got this insurance, they went through and they sent a guy down here and reviewed all the values of all of the different properties. And there were some of the properties that were really significantly low compared to that in other years. So our values of our properties were up $1,592,155. And that's the biggest part of it. Also, there was a rate increase for bonds. That was of course the one that was really the million losses or anything, but that was another thousand dollars. So effectively what Greg is saying is uh it's a flat rate. Basically, we did not get any increase even though we had a few losses. So I think uh what you were saying before is on Thursday, we should have a.
Resolution.
Resolution. But Greg, you know, I'm gonna give you his cell phone number. If anybody has any questions about it, we should feel free to give him a call. I think he said you can call me tonight if you want, if anybody has any questions. But that's basically what I want to communicate.
Now here too, again, for I think for the public, the the George, Commissioner of Insurance. Insurance is one of the most costly items that we have on our budget sheet. Um George's been doing this for a couple of years. We have saved significant dollars by shopping, talking, prodding, all of the insurance carriers, whether it was compensation, which we got a significant savings in 2012, liability insurance, all these other kinds of things. And this is not the kind of work that's easy to do. You've got to take every vehicle you have and make sure that the ID numbers of those vehicles are they're still in service, that they have been sold five years ago or whatever. It's just follow up and making sure that we're paying for what we're getting. We're not paying unnecessarily. So um good job and uh we'll put it out there tonight.
As far as the follow-up with many vehicles, I'd like to thank Priscilla because I know she spent many, many hours actually doing the cut work.
Right.
On doing that. And that's really a difficult thing to do, to go through all the different vehicles that we have, make sure all the VIN numbers are correct and that we're not being charged for something or that we wouldn't have one of the vehicles or the insurance policy. So you really have to do a lot of due diligence on that.
Well, I know in months passed, years passed, we've paid insurance on a vehicle we no longer own. We'll not think about that. The government is bad at best. You know, you and so uh I think we're on top of this.
Yeah, I really I really think we are, yeah. Thanks again, Priscilla. Appreciate it.
Okay. Anybody else coming for the board that they would like to uh okay. Well, if not, would uh someone like to make a motion, we uh during the meeting, go into executive session with the intent not to return, to discuss potential settlement proposal with the village regarding the village and town sewer dispute and a new intermunicipal agreement. Also discuss notice claim in the matter of Sheila Faith, Stephen Faith, Adal versus the town of Goshen, County of Orange and the New York State Department of uh or the DBC. Uh update on the CSEA negotiation status.
Before we make that, we want to recognize the.
Yeah.
You have room for a quick question?
Sure, go for it.
Or two. Right beside you.
I know you're eager to get home.
No, we'll be here a long time, believe me.
Sure.
We're.
Sandwich is about 11:30.
It's okay. We'll be downstairs.
I know.
You'll be out there right.
The commercial serving cannoli is up until 8:30.
The 280,000 you referred to on the unpaid uh water fees.
Yeah.
Yes. That's an absolute number.
Right.
Do you have any idea what percentage of the households or the accounts that represents?
We do if I want to.
Yeah, we can get them.
Yeah.
And we have to work that out. That's this this document is required by law. So we by name.
Right. I only ask because you mentioned that it's in it's an indicia of one one a number of indicia on the economic situation. I'd be curious to know uh if that represents 10% or you know.
I I don't know.
2% or whatever.
Right.
Of the of the households.
Right.
Uh the other thing is that my standard question, can you say anything at all about the arbitration and negotiation?
We're gonna talk about it tonight.
You're gonna talk about it.
Yeah.
Can you say anything?
And the latest provision. So I mean, it's work in progress. Can't say much beyond that. Um.
Tuesday and Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday would be another.
Thursday should be.
I think we're getting close. We're getting close. Yeah.
You had indicated back in September that it might come mid-October. That's why as you can see, there's not enough information that we had at all.
Well.
That didn't happen.
Well, it's a lot of work. This this board and our attorney have been drafting and working on this document all this time, along with our professional accountant, Steve Brown. So we put a lot of work into this and uh and it's been shared and commented on by the the village.
We prepare these.
And but we're but it's it's a it's a tremendous amount of work because we want this to last. We want a good resolution. We want a good IMI that will uh stand up.
So yeah, we're we're still on track to see a a an amalgamated uh result here, both both the IMI and the.
The two will be together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll I'll second that motion or make that motion go to executive session.
There is.
Did you make the motion?
I I made the motion.
I'll second.
Seconded. Yep. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, what I understand, we're at the mower grass again.
Geez.
Which? I went out tonight. I was, I can't believe this. I looked like I had dandelions, you know, and yellow flowers. They're coming alive as well because of this warm weather we've had. The only thing that's gonna kill them is the short days.